Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 20th.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Mr. Dunn?
Present.
If you'd please stand me and join the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Lord, we're blessed people, and yet we want to take a moment just to remember all those who have been affected by storms in the south and fires up in the northwest, and remember our part as human beings to help other people. And I know many from our area are there helping out as first responders and linemen and all kinds of things, and we're just grateful for that support and that help for those folks who are digging out of all that's been going on with the storms and things. So we want to lift them up this morning. But we're thankful for our county, thank for a great weekend that we had with the car show, and, Lord, just all the things that are going on in our county. We live in a great place, and we can be thankful of that. Lord, I pray for our commissioners this morning. You give them wisdom and guidance as they look at the things that are going on in a county and the things that must be done. And, Lord, be with each of them, be with all the employees. And, Lord, just watch over our families as we go to work, go to school, recreate in our beautiful city. And, Lord, just watch over and protect us. Just be with this meeting this morning and guide and direct in every way we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Under correspondence or organizational business, we should have a representative here from Over the Road Gang for an update on this year's car show.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ed Clark. I'm with the Over the Road Gang Car Club in Ottawa. We, yes, we did have a big weekend last weekend. We had the Old Murray River Run, the 31st, and the official count was 2,136, 2,123 cars registered. That's about 50 more than we've ever had in the past. We had a great weekend. There were really almost no incidents, nothing of any note to, you know, to detract from it, other than the rain. We had had a little bit of rain, but just wanted to come and bring an appreciation plaque and thank the commissioners for your support and for, you know, over the year, over the last 31 years, everything we've done. And I also kind of wanted to note that last year, there was a gentleman there named Dennis Gage. He has a show on the velocity channel, My Classic Car. And he was at the River Run. The county tourism paid his expenses, his and this photographer. They were there and they did a show on the, on the Old Murray River Run. And it was, actually, it was a very nice show. I think he interviewed five of the car owners and had some shots of the park and the downtown. And he really, you know, he, he did a nice show. But one of the award winners this year was from South Carolina, and they said that they had seen that show and decided that this was an event that they really wanted to, to attend. And I have no idea how many other people, but I knew though there was one from South Carolina anyway. And I just wanted to present this plaque. And I, an additional note, my older sister was showing me a picture from Rock Springs 4H camp in 1961. And I don't know whether you would recognize Commissioner Dunn or not, but he has changed in the intervening years. As we all have.
Well, thank you. We should be the ones thanking you for all the people and commerce and good things you bring to our community. So you're a group. Thank you. All right. Next is a recognition of Debbie, our treasurer, Debbie Hoag, our treasurer, for her 40 years of service and presentation of a retirement plaque. So I guess we can all go down.
Like you said, we're not as young as we used to be. A lot of years.
This is an appreciation and recognition for her dedicated service, the Debbie Hoag, our county treasurer, July 1978 to October 27.
Well, thank you all. And it's just been an honor to be a, a long-term employee and, you know, to have the opportunity to work with all of you and the department heads and county employees. So, you know, I've appreciated the, you know, support and all the help because we can't do it alone. It takes everybody working together. So I appreciate that. And also probably I want to address all the support and confidence from our public in, you know, supporting me in the role of county treasurer. So it's.
You've done a wonderful job in Michigan. We'd like to take 10 minutes to congratulate Debbie, but I think our first item of business, we have a high school student. So if we can get through that and take 10 minutes, she can get back to class and everybody will be, be, she doesn't want to go back to class, huh?
Some kids know, but I'm pretty sure she does.
Let's go back to selling. All right. Do we have any public comment today?
No.
Our consent agenda today would include the meeting minutes from our September 6 meeting and tax or claim vouchers in the amount of $530,601.33 and a special claim voucher in the amount of $164.40. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? So move.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
First item of business would be consider a request from the Ottawa High School Student Council to use the courthouse lawn for a homecoming block party scheduled for September 27th from 5:00 to 7:00. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Rosie Marquez, and I am student body vice president of Ottawa High School. Today I'm here to request for Ottawa High School to use the courthouse lawn on Main Street for the block party. We've been using the courthouse for a couple of years, and I believe, and the student council believes that this is a place for, a good place for us to host our block party because it also brings a lot of student involvement along with community involvement. So.
Any questions? Is there any kind of parade this year?
No, I don't believe so.
Not doing a parade anymore? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve? Make the motion. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take a 10-minute break to congratulate Debbie Hoag. Right. Second item on our agenda is to receive an update from K-Works, the Kansas Workers Risk Cooperative for Counties.
Morning.
Good morning.
Well, if I haven't met you before, my name's Brandon. I'm the safety person with K-Work. Most people know me as the defensive driving guy. That seems to be what I, I'm here in Franklin County foremost. But this is my 17th year working with the counties. Just to talk to you about the various issues that I was asked to present today. First is kind of an update on national and state policies and procedures that could affect you. Wanted to start off first with talking about OSHA, because a lot of times I hear from counties, well, we're not under OSHA. We don't have to follow OSHA. That's kind of true. Of course municipalities are exempt from OSHA regulators. They're not going to be showing up in Franklin County to cite you for anything. However, you are covered by the Kansas Department of Labor for safe workplace practices, and the Kansas Department of Labor follows the OSHA regulations. So in essence, you still have to follow OSHA regulations. One of the OSHA things that's changed here recently, August 2015, we now have a confined spaces standard for the construction industry. So that's going to affect anybody doing construction, which even includes up to painting, something is considered to be construction. So now, under the construction standard, basically how it affects you guys is when you do any sort of trenching. That's where we see it coming into play. OSHA says anytime you have a trench four foot deep or deeper, it's now considered a permit required confined space. So if you're going to put somebody down in that trench, there's things that you have to do. You have to do continuous air monitoring while they're down there, before they go down there, while they're down there. You have to have a helper. You have to have rescue services. You have to have personal protective equipment and so on and so forth. Also, if you're having an employee in a trench four foot down or deeper, it also, the excavation standard also applies. So now you have to think about shoring, sloping, shielding while that employee is down, down that trench. So oftentimes see employees in trenches they probably shouldn't be in. Second issue nationally is the fall prevention standard. It's a national emphasis program from OSHA. Need to make sure that anytime we have an employee working over six foot in height, that they have some sort of fall protection. Now, fall protection can be a ladder that they're standing on. It can be railing around the platform that they're working on. If those aren't an option, then we're looking at personal protective equipment as in fall protection system. So anything six foot higher, higher, we're into fall protection. Kansas Department of Labor, some of the things that they've been hitting our counties for recently are not having policies, procedures, and training in place for the employees for some specific areas. Those being bloodborne pathogens, lockout-tagout, personal protective equipment, emergency action plan, and hazard communications. So if those are an issue, we can help provide the training for almost all of those, with the exception of the emergency action plan, which is so specific to your own county and to individual buildings. That's really something that, that the county itself would need to provide the training on. We also have that training available online for free that people can take, which I'll talk about the online training here in just a little bit. Second issue I was asked to address were your, your claims experience. I've looked up your claims for the last three years from 2014 to present. As of a couple of days ago, when I put this together, your losses over that period of time is $248,430. Out of that amount of money, I looked at the top three causes of loss for your county. 28% of the losses that are paid are because of muscle strains. 27% are from slips and falls. And then way below that, at 9%, is employees getting struck by something, whatever that struck by is. Various different things. You compare that to the national statistics and how employees get hurt at work nationally. Nationally, the leading cause of employees getting hurt at work is motor vehicles. 40% of all US injuries at work involve motor vehicles. So you guys are doing really good in that regards, but we do have some issues apparently with, with the muscle strain issues and slips and falls.
Do you have the national averages on those two by chance?
I don't. Off the top of my head. But slips and falls are, I think, number two, right behind motor vehicles. I looked at the departments and where, where the money is going, going to for the different departments for claims. The top at 97,000 is law enforcement. Number two is sanitation at 70,000. Number three is the landfill at 39,000. And then it kind of drops off precipitously after that. Roden Bridge is 21,000, which is actually really good. It's great. Not, the only thing that jumps out at me here is the, the money at the landfill and sanitation. We don't, really don't see that. It's kind of surprising. So not sure what's going on there.
You don't know if that's like a, a very high one-time thing or multiple things at a lower rate?
I'd have to look again at the, the raw data. I do remember there was a couple large muscle strain, and I can't remember what departments those are from. Looked at your experience modifier. I was asked to also kind of give you an idea of, of how your claims experience affects your premiums. Really generic way of putting how your premiums are calculated is you take the wages you pay for an employee class, you multiply it by a rate, and then you multiply that by an experience modifier. Now, you don't have a whole lot of control over wages. I mean, you'd have some control, of course. You can hire more people or less people, but you still have to have employees doing jobs. You have no control over the rate. That's something that's set by the, by the rating institution. But you do have control over your experience modifier. And that is a numerical representation of how good or bad your losses have been over the course of the last three years. If your experience modifier is one, that means you have the exact number of losses that we would anticipate for you to have over that period of three years. If your experience modifier is higher than one, you've got more losses than what you expect. And if it's lower than one, you're doing better than, than what will be expected. Your experience modifier right now is .86. So overall, doing pretty good. It's just that I think we need to look at some of the larger losses, the strains and slips and falls, and see what we can do to work on those. And then loss prevention services, things that we have available for you. Of course, defensive driving is one of the things that I do primarily for Franklin County. This year so far, we've had 57 county employees that have gone through defensive driving classes with another class scheduled for EMS next week. Flagger classes, I've certified 35 people at Roden Bridge Department for flagging. That needs to be done every two years, and that was done this, this, this summer. And you are required to be certified to be a flagger in Kansas. You have to go through some sort of a certification program, and K-Work provides that. Forklift classes, the last time I could find that I did a forklift class for Franklin County was in August of 2014. I need to look at the training records at our main office in Topeka to see if that really is the case, because if, if it is the case, that three-year certification is expiring or has expired as of last month. So we'll need to get people back through forklift. Online classes. And I mentioned before, we have free online training through our website for any county employee that wants to take classes. Those classes rotate every quarter, with the exception of a few of them that I mentioned that we keep on there year-round, the hazard communication, bloodborne pathogens, personal protective equipment, lockout-tagout, and emergency action, emergency action plan class. So everything else rotates every quarter. Those classes can be used for law enforcement recertification purposes. So I want to think about taking advantage of, of using some of those classes for, for free. And so far, I can't find records of Franklin County taking any online classes. So it's being, not being utilized. Safety inspections, I've done one safety inspection on the county facilities. That was July of this year, for 2017. I anticipate doing one more before the end of the year. That's all the update that I have for you all. Do you have any questions for me?
Look like it. Well, thank you. Thanks for your time and coming down.
I've got the meeting at 10 o'clock with all the department heads and then Safety Committee at 2 o'clock. So.
Appreciate your report.
So will they then let employees know like where those online classes are, how to reach them and get to them?
I plan on covering that with all the department heads and the Safety Committee today. So.
We've set up a more in-depth meeting at the staff level where I anticipate him getting into a lot more detail and helping our employees understand ways that they can, you know, hopefully avoid some of the accidents and occurrences that we're seeing. So I think we've got our bases covered pretty well today.
Good. Sounds like a good plan.
Thanks. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Third item on our agenda is to consider for approval the Women Infants and Children Contract and Update, the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning, Midge.
This is the standard WIC Education Nutritional Supplement Program contract. It's a federal contract passed, funds passed through the state. The grant year runs from October 1st through September 30th of each year. Increased the request a little bit for what we're reimbursed, up to $84,731. That doesn't mean we'll get all that. We have to show that we used it before we can get the reimbursement. There's nothing really changed in the contract. Mary Ann Parkin and Erin Laurie are both do it, working in that position, in that department and providing services to about 560 women and infants and children up to the age of five. They do a great job. Very well appreciated by the clients that they serve. We get good feedback on them. But be glad to answer any questions you may have about this contract.
Good program. Very necessary.
If not, I would request approval of this contract for the coming year.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion. We approve the contract for, for WIC.
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. Looks like the next item of business also with you, Midge.
Yes, earlier in the year, we visited briefly about renovations for the Health Department. We've done some more sketching and had an architect draw up some plans for the front office to renovate that area, make it more user-friendly. It creates, hopefully, a more confidential check-in window where, right now, we have the great big window. We hope to curve the front office area so that our check-in people can see the door, see when people come in, rather than trying to guess what they want. The window would be smaller, so there's not as much noise or verbiage that can be heard by the people in the waiting area. We feel like that's very important. There would be some redecorating in that area as well. We also, and this is a change from our previous plan, but we would take, take out a wall in the front office where there's a hallway on the west side, move the checkout clerk in so that there's area for people to stand instead of being in the hallway when they leave to check out. That's always been kind of a jumbled-up point. The other really, couple other major things that we're proposing is to remove the, the wall between the current immunization room, which is really small, where the refrigerators are, and the adjoining exam room, and removing that wall so that, you know, we sometimes have families of five or six people, and there's just not space for the nurses to do their work and for parents to hold their children. So we would remove that wall and remove one of the doors so that that's a bigger room and certainly more functional for immunizations. And then adding, adding some walls, it's interesting how over time things change. There used to be more offices in that office. We want them back. With Robert as our assistant director, we would divide my current director's office into two. We would, since we've gotten rid of the physical files, we have room for conference area. So we would put a wall back in the front office so we have that conference area for meetings. And then recently, we're looking at some changes maybe in the nursing staff and their duties where we would add one more wall in the front office with a door for additional nursing to, to assist with the WIC program and some of the work there. So those are the major renovations we're requesting. We have gotten some estimates on that. When we got the estimates, it, it looks like it's somewhere over 108, $110,000, up to, you know, it's kind of hard to tell, but 120, 130 maybe at the very most. It is based on our discussions considerably less expensive to do this all at once than we had originally thought about maybe piecing it out. But that adds quite a bit to the cost, as you might imagine. So we do have money in the budget and on our reserve fund to cover the cost. So I guess my request would be to allow us to solicit bids for this work.
There is a, what I consider a very important consideration that Midge didn't mention. This renovation also increases the ADA accessibility in her office, which, and I'll talk about another ADA issue later in the meeting, but I, we're bringing this building. We're doing a lot of good work in that regard here, and that's another improvement that would go in. And I would say Midge's management of the Health Department, since I've been here, has been very, very progressive, and her proposed renovations reflect that. Fully support this. Applaud her for her management style. I think that this, she's looking at what she has and how she can best utilize that and provide the most effective service possible. This does that, increases ADA accommodation, increases HIPAA protections. I mean, I, given that we have the money in the reserve, I think this is a very good use for that. We've talked about any anticipated upcoming expenses. She's indicated to me she's not really, she doesn't see anything on the horizon. She's not really in a department that, I think it's somewhat unusual to see just unexpected catastrophic expenses come down. So that's not really a concern. I think she's in pretty good shape. So.
So part of this would be the door that she talked about previously, I presume?
Yes. That front, front entrance would be electronic so that people can enter there. Yeah.
For a lot of people doing business with the county, this is the face of the county. So this would be just a solicit bids?
Yep. Correct.
Get an actual concrete number. I'm sure if you, anybody isn't familiar with anything she's talking about, Midge would be happy to show you around, but.
Absolutely.
If you're familiar with the suite, that all makes sense to me. Seem like logical things to do. So. Any other questions for Midge while we have her up here?
Just, to the extent there's any reservation, as you acknowledge, Cole, this is just a solicit bids. When we get those bids, we will, I mean, we'll likely bring in the actual plans. And at that time, prior to approval, you guys can put your eyes on, literally, here's what that money is going towards. We'll probably give you a better vision if you feel like you're lacking one. This is just to begin the process. So.
Anyone like to make a motion to solicit bids for the office renovations at the Health Department?
I'll make a motion to approve soliciting bids for the Health Department.
All right. Someone like to make a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Fifth item on our agenda is consider for approval the June and July 2017 EMS Activity Report.
We're playing catch-up today. Just to run through the June real quick. In June, we did 314 calls. That was average of 10.47 calls a day, bringing us up to 1,831 calls, 144 calls, more than we were at the previous year. And we did have deposits of 83,328.32, bringing us to a year deposit of 603,488.23. Adjustments of 45,111.17. We sent 18,431.90 to the state sell-off, 464.80 to Midwest Collections, and had service fees of 164,259 with 27 move-ups. So this summer, as you'll see in the next one too, we've been busy running calls, but we're also seeing good revenues, good, stuff like that. On page five, the June data report, we did transport 197 patients to the hospital out of the 314 responses. We took seven to nursing homes on the ones taken to the hospital, 134 went to RINs. And we've continued to see an increase of patients that are going there. But with that, we're still continuing to see on the pickup side of things, the amount of patients that are coming out, and it's somewhere average between 45 and 55 to 60 patients a month we're transporting out. We did have our first flight at the hospital that we helped with in June. We had 70 refusals for a 22.29% refusal rate.
I didn't hear what you said. The first what?
A what?
What did you, the first what did you say?
The first flight we've taken, because when they took the helicopter pad down, we made a deal with them that we transport flight crews from the airport to the hospital and back. We had the first one in June since they've had the hospital and the helicopter pad down. So continuing to see that we're not flying a lot of patients out of the hospital, but that one was a. that one was a one that needed to go by air. Are there any questions on the June? Okay. The July report, we had 344 responses in July, averaged 11.10 calls per day, bringing us up to 2,175 calls, 175 calls over where we were at in 2016. So like I said, we're continuing to see that increase in call volume. Had really good deposits of $94,557.64, bringing us to a total of $698,4287, with our budget on our side, $825,000, we're $126,000 for meeting budget. Adjustments of $54,590.51. We did send $21,023.23 to the state sell-off program, $5,468.65 to Midwest Collections, and we did have bills of $177,221.30 with 24 move-ups. I will tell you, I do have the August revenues. We had revenues of $119,215.65 for August.
That gets you to budget, wouldn't it?
Huh?
That gets you pretty close to budget then.
I mean, we're $7,000 going into October or September with, to meet budget. So stuff's coming in really good, that's exciting to know. We'll continue to see how stuff plays out, but it's good. I do want to talk for a second though about education, because I know at one point, when we did our community education position, we did that, we talked about how much money our education department makes. What I plan to do next month for you is, right now with the freeze I'm showing you, that's revenues from classes we taught outside. Some of that shows money that came back in as reimbursement stuff, and the other part's service fees. I'm going to break that out to show you how much money our education department has actually brought in. Right now, to date, it's almost $22,000 that we brought in with our education department. We do have a big agreement with Olathe pending right now. That could be us teaching every one of their staff at Olathe Medical Center PALS. So we're looking at maybe 400 students, so if we get that, that'll be a really nice boost in our revenues for our education department, and I'll keep you posted when we get that. But right now, we are teaching PALS, just as a heads up, to Lawrence Hospital, Lawrence Surgery Center, Overland Park Hospital, and if we get Olathe, we're doing it there. We still have, under our window, Menorca, Johnson County Community College, Overland Park, Lawrence Coffee County Hospital. So our education department is continuing to grow and hopefully continue to show some support with the revenues. On the back page, page five, we had 219 patients out of 344 transported to hospitals, 144 of those, or 65% did go to ransom. Three patients were transported to something other nursing homes, any of that. There was two flights in July that we did assist with from the airport and back. We had 78 refusals for a refusal rate of 22.67, which is still running right there under the national average. I think overall, with where we were at before the summer, we got busy. We were at 19%, so we're still right around that 20% refusal rate. Is there any questions on any of those reports that I can answer?
Not on the report, Nick, but since ransom, made agreement with Shawnee Mission for cardiac care, I guess, has that changed your processes at all?
We haven't seen a big increase in transfers to Shawnee Mission due to that. I do anticipate we'll be, we'll see some, but talking to Matt and Stacy and Angie with that, excuse me, their anticipation with that is they're actually going to have a cardiologist in-house every day to hopefully keep more of these cardiac patients when, before we were transferring quite a few of them that may have been able to stay on their floor to Olathe. Their hope with this is that they'll keep more of those cardiac patients that we were transferring out, because they'll have the cardiologist in-house. So it's really too early to say if we're going to see a big switch of it. I will tell you, I do keep an eye on where we drop patients off, and I haven't seen a big swing going to Shawnee Mission yet. That is in the back of my head, I won't lie, because that puts our ambulances out of our county another 40 minutes or so when we do those transfers, so it's something we will be keeping an eye on.
All right, we would need a motion to approve the June and July ambulance reports, which include the financials attached. Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, our next item of business is with the Road and Bridge Department, I believe deals with the painted pavement striping project.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
You approved the solicitation of bids for the 2017 painted pavement marking project at your meeting of August 30th. The bids were open September 14th in the Office of County Clerk. Bid for Midwest Striping was the lowest responsible bid and the only bid received, although we did mail a solicitation to three firms. The request is a motion to award the bid to Midwest Striping.
All right. Where are we at with our chip and seal? How close to completed for the year are we?
It was completed about 10 days ago.
10 days ago, that's.
When would this contractor anticipate starting?
He's already called and wanted to know if we were ready for him.
All right.
We told him that it'd been less than a week since it was completed. It hadn't been swept, traffic hadn't been, had an opportunity to work on it, and we'd let him know when we got a little closer.
All right.
He still needed to order the paint.
How many other bids were there, Jim?
We mailed to three contractors, we only received one bid.
Okay.
I was surprised with training traffic marking here, doing a state contract that they didn't at least put a bid in, but apparently they have enough work to keep them busy.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the proposal from Midwest Striping?
Make a motion, we award the painting bid to Midwest Striping in the amount of $37,607.10.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Our seventh item is discuss or consider approving a financing option for the county's new P-25 radio system.
You have in front of you a management summary that Janet prepared discussing the bids that we received. As you can see on there, we received three bids on this. One from US Bank, the other from Bank Funding LLC, and a third from Kansas State Bank. In reviewing those, the one from Bank Funding LLC can probably be removed off the top because they have the county financing, all of it, all of the radios, and that just pushes us uncomfortably close to our qualified limit on loans, so, so then we look closer at Kansas State Bank and US Bank, and based on what we've got in front of us, US Bank just gave a tremendous bid on this. And I should have said from the get-go, Janet, feel free to jump in anytime if, if you so choose. Just crunching the numbers, and I guess first of all, none of the three met all of our requirements. I mean, we had a series of requirements in our RFP, none of them met those. Having said that, I think this could potentially work out exceptionally well. I will tell you that we based our request off of what Motorola quoted us, because we could have financed through Motorola, and that would have been a 10-years at 4%. And we were kind of shooting for, thinking we'd get something in the neighborhood of 3.5, 3.25. Well, we've got US Bank here at one option 2.25, the other at 2.55, which is just incredible. Talked to our financial advisor, he's incredibly happy with this rate. If you compare US Banks versus Kansas State Bank, and again, this is just the county portion, but on a yearly basis, our payments are $25,000 cheaper with the US Bank option, and over the life of the entire lease, it's about $80,000 cheaper, just in interest costs. And that's with a 10-year lease as opposed to a 7-year lease. Having said all of that, I cannot recommend for approval any of these options today. The reason for that is, and you've got Alan here if you need more details on this, but when we switch these systems, the old system goes offline, and basically if you want to, unless you are comfortable being in the dark, you have to switch onto this system, you have to purchase this equipment. When we went through this process, again, when we started looking at the county financing all of it, we were just getting so close to our bank qualified limit, so we decided that we were going to ask the city and the townships to finance their own radios. To their credit, they've all agreed with doing that, but when we met with them, we were talking about a 10-year arrangement, and Janet helped them with their budgets based upon a 10-year arrangement. Well, what we have for them is a 5-year arrangement. I think it will work out better for them, but I think they all deserve the opportunity to have that discussion with me, with Janet, with Alan, so that we can walk them through how this still works out for them. There are going to be some that will likely struggle to do this, but the county, given how great this interest rate is, we're going to be in a position where we can help those entities with their payments. So I don't think any of them will be worse off, but I want to have that discussion with them so that they don't feel like they were blindsided. But I would anticipate, based on the data we have today, probably being back in front of you next week recommending approval of the US Bank option. Janet, what did I miss there?
I have had some conversations with several of these smaller tax entities, the fire districts, and several of them have indicated to me that they plan to pay these off in three to four years. There are a few, as Derek indicated, that we still need to have conversations with just to see where they're at and what their long-term plan is, but, you know, as Derek said, as you can see, the US Bank is substantially lower in interest costs for us, and, and we don't foresee us paying it off early, so, you know, we need to really look heavily at that.
How many of these entities do you think are going outside, other where, to get their budgeting or money, or not all?
The only one that I know, LOH is going to pay theirs off completely. They were included in this bid, but they've indicated to us now that they're going to pay theirs in full. Of the rest of them, none of them have indicated to me that they're going to get their own financing.
I thought at one time the Wellsville-
I see the Wellsville City Council at their last meeting-
Gene's here, and Gene can speak to that, whether they've tried to secure their own financing or not.
We're just looking at all options. Hey, US Bank's had to give us a few organizations on. Yeah.
Gene, you were at the last city council meeting, the one I was at, and it sounded like the city had already got their financing from somewhere, but I don't know about the city, maybe, maybe not.
I don't know, I'll work in the city.
Oh, okay.
Kyle's back there.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Yeah, we're probably going to go through a local bank in Wellsville.
Yeah.
So Wellsville City probably won't be there, okay.
They've indicated they're going to pay for the whole thing.
For theirs too. We were scheduled to approve today. I, I don't, I don't see a downside to waiting another week. Our first payment to Motorola isn't due until October 9th. If we approve in a week, we're approving on September 27th. Even in the unlikely event that we don't have cash in hand from our financer by the 9th, I'm generally aware of what payment amount will be due to Motorola. Given the incoming money that we have from the townships and other options that we have, we could still make that payment pretty easily, even if the financing gets delayed. Having said that, I don't believe that it's going to, so I think giving us a week to make sure that we've got everything concrete, talk to the townships, talk to the city of Ottawa, I think it's the best course of action here, so.
And the US Bank option is still, I mean, that'll still be on the table, their offer is good till?
Yeah, I've got a call-out to their vice president, but I'm, I'm sure, usually the bare minimum on these is 30 days, but yeah, I-
Okay.
And if I hear otherwise, then that would be something that I would, very rarely will I recommend a special meeting, but if there is some unexpected cutoff date, then certainly I would look at calling that, but I can't fathom that this would be valid for, I mean, it'd only be two weeks at that point, so, but I'll verify that for sure.
I would agree that financially responsible would go with the US Bank, that figure hands down, I mean, that's just good financial planning to do that.
It, yeah, again, I, none of the options fulfilled all of our requirements. I think, you know, the obstacle, and it's not a bad obstacle, I mean, I think a very, very important consideration is the life of the loan and how much we are paying out, and it is unequivocally cheaper on the US Bank option. It's cheaper than we imagined. The only obstacle to overcome is some of these rural departments helping them be able to make those yearly payments, but talking with Janet, Janet does their budgets, Alan has relationships with them, kind of understands what their intentions are. I'm very, very confident that we can work it out with each of them in a way that's good for everyone, so.
It's obvious also from the bids that 10 years is too far out for any of them to be that kind of a risk-taking, then it's too, too hard to see down the road that far.
I, I did have conversations with two local banks on this. One of them did, obviously did bid, one of them did not bid. They both had concerns about the longevity of the radios and their capacity to go 10 years. One indicated to me that they don't normally finance radios any longer than three years. I did give them a brief synopsis that I got from emergency management stating, you know, that the longevity of this system as a whole is projected to be 10 years, and the infrastructure would still be good well beyond the 10 years, and that, you know, we have optimization built in with these radios for six years, is that?
Eight.
For eight years, so, so it is a substantial amount of time that we're, we've already built into this, that these radios will be, you know, touched and upgraded, and, and so there, there was hesitation there from some of them, I do understand that. They, they just generally didn't understand the, the quality of the system that we're investing in here. I mean, obviously, not many people purchase this system. This is a system specialized for, you know, our type of, of services that we offer, so that, that definitely was a struggle here.
Well, and to kind of tack on to that, I, I mean, it's a little bit frustrating to me because the manufacturer itself, Motorola, I mean, is willing to, was willing to finance their radios for 10 years. I mean, we've been told consistently that there is a 10-year life on these radios. US Bank is willing to finance our radios and the city's radios for 10 years, and I suspect, while I haven't verified this, I, I don't, the five- for ten years. And I suspect, while I haven't verified this, I don't, the five years for the townships, I think, has more to do with the amount being financed than it does the quality of the radios. So I think in this option, you know, we, I think they believe in the life of the radios. So I think provided we can work it out-
Our financials are all online, as I believe Ottawa's are also. I think the reluctance with US Bank was strictly just the lack of financial information and the, they were willing to submit a bid and wanted to get in the most competitive bid they could. So that's, I think, where the shorter term comes for these other taxing entities.
So would you need to table this? What action would you like?
I don't know that I need any action on the board. We're, I mean, I'm not asking you to approve anything. I'm, I guess, telling you that you'll, in all likelihood, have this item on your agenda next week for action. So.
Do you have any questions in the meantime? By all means, reach out to Derek or I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I have a question for Alan. I noticed a lot of work going on on the tower west of town. Are they starting to work on switching this over? Or is there just maintenance on that tower?
They're just doing maintenance with another company on that tower. We've done, we've done some work on the system, but our interruption on the tower probably will start for another third day.
All right. That brings us to staff reports.
I have a few things today. I guess first, I want to talk about, Nick brought up his department's education. And I had a long discussion with Nick and Darren Hall recently about this. And that has just grown exponentially in the short time that I have been here. And we talked about Midge's management of her department being progressive. And Nick's, Nick is the same way. We're blessed with a lot of good staff here. I mean, our staff's great. But Nick's vision, and it's easy to show up and do your job every day and just kind of get through the day. It's an entirely different animal to show up with the initiative to try and bring your office forward and give your best every day. And that really exemplifies our vision for the whole county. I mean, this is what we're trying to do with the organization. So I commend him on the way he runs that department. He does a fantastic job. Included in your packet today, you got a notice from the city about new TIF district. That's just a statutory notice. It has to do with the new Holiday Inn going in down there. You have any questions, feel free to ask. I very well might refer you over to Wendy, but if you're curious as to why you got that. If you'll recall, Doug Rich from Ransom was in several weeks ago to talk about some potential renovations that Ransom Memorial would like to do with this building. At the time, and he was here to give a brief presentation and to discuss a cost-sharing arrangement. At the time, he didn't have any hard quotes. This week, I received a quote from him on this door over here, the sliding door on the, it'd be what, the southeast entrance. That quote is ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Now, when we had our meeting, it was my understanding that the board was generally in agreement that we would cost share. And I believe what was discussed was something, a fifty-fifty arrangement. If that is how you feel, five thousand dollars is well within my purchasing authority. I wouldn't need any formal action from you. This is a huge improvement to this building. If you'll, I mean, we've all been through it, but that current door down there has a, and I'm going to butcher what this actually is, Colt, but it's just a metal pillar-type thing right down the middle of it, that even though the doors are automatic, I mean, wheelchairs still struggle to get through there because there's that pillar. Well, this removes all of that and again greatly enhances that interest or that entrance. I would highly recommend the cost sharing of five thousand dollars is, for what it does to this building is a very, very good investment. And this is part one of their renovations. They're still wanting to do something similar to this south door. But for now, if you all are okay, my inclination is to just approve this under my spending authority unless you guys direct me otherwise. Certainly stand for any questions.
I'd love to see it.
Okay, very good. Another hospital-related item, their council reached out to me this week. They are now interested in using Suite One temporarily. I mean, Ransom kind of has a bigger vision for their space at the annex and what they would like to do with it. And they've talked to us about Suite Two. And as you know, Suite Two, we've had a lot of departments move out of there, mine included. I think ultimately, there's some discussion about them taking over Suite Two and us potentially moving into Suite One because that would be a more efficient use of each space for all involved. It would be a better revenue generator for us. That's not on the table right now. That's more of a future project. But in the meantime, they would like to use Suite One. Suite One's sitting empty. I talked to their council and told them, you know, I provided the board has no issues with it. I, you know, there's going to be a charge. What that charge is, I mean, that's something I will talk with their council about and bring that back to you. But again, I wanted to get a feel from you all about whether or not you would be okay with them using that space on a temporary basis. And it could last until we're potentially ready to do something with it for ourselves. Or, so it could be a several month, I mean, it could be a several month arrangement. So are there any issues with that?
Makes sense to me. No reason let it sit empty when it doesn't need to.
Okay. Okay. Very good. I got a request and Commissioner Renaud was copied on this. Mid-America Nutrition has apparently, they have a central kitchen here in Ottawa and they have sustained severe roof leakage. And they, I guess, are requesting any kind of help from the county that the county can provide. I, I mean, and the amount they requested was five thousand dollars. And I have not yet contacted this woman, but obviously, having just done a budget and become very familiar with it, I, you know, we don't, we don't have five thousand dollars just easily at our disposal. Having said that, something I wanted to bring to the board for discussion and just, I guess, get some idea of where you all were at with that and any guidance you could give me.
It's my understanding, are they asking the other three counties also to do the same?
They are. Every county that they serve, they are requesting, it's my understanding, the same donation from, yes.
Roy and I both go to that area agency meeting and have, I know there's been some issues with the leadership or the management, I guess more, of Mid-America Nutrition. So from that standpoint, I'm not sure how well they have, you know, they've really talked about their agency even cancelling their contract with Mid-America Nutrition.
What building is this?
Truth be told, Commissioner Howard, I'm not sure which, where their central kitchen is located in our-
Why would you not be carrying insurance that would cover roof damage?
She'd be the one in the industrial park. It could be failure to maintain. It could just be an old roof.
And I think, I think they had planned on doing, replacing the roof. They just don't have enough money in their budget to do it right now. And probably because maybe of weather or something, they've reached the point where they need to do something more, you know, pertinent quickly than what they had planned. I really don't know that much either. Roy may have some information, but I'm like you, I don't know that we should be the savior for that. I guess if you could check into maybe more.
I'm happy to call the other counties and just see if they're able to do anything and if so, what. Basically, I, what I wanted today was at least some idea if this was something that you all at least wanted me to look into or just get a feel, I guess, for that. But I'm happy to call around. I'm happy to ask questions potentially about insurance. Certainly, I can come back here a lot more informed if it's something you guys wish to see again.
Yeah, I'd like to have some more information.
Yeah, not having enough information to establish whether or not the building is still habitable and operational, I would hate to put them out of operation where they aren't able to provide meals, of course.
I understand. Okay.
And I, one time, Roy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe their manager, their administrator, whoever it is, has been replaced or, not replaced, but left. And now there, some volunteer lady who's done it before stepped in, has kind of stepped in now as an interim person with Mid-America. So you might be able to get some direction. Maybe that's who sent the email. I'm not even sure.
Sure. Yeah.
Generally agree, though, that be hesitant, I guess, to jump in and do things like this given our own, I mean, I think of the forty-year-old air conditioning unit at the jail, the elevators down there that can't be repaired anymore, the, our own capital needs. So.
And it's been my experience when these requests come in, I try to do a pretty good job of emphasizing to these folks that, you know, the county, I mean, that this isn't the only request we receive. This isn't the only need that we have. Or we have our own needs that haven't necessarily been met. And responses to that have been very positive. I mean, generally, folks understand that. So, and I'm, you know, I'll talk to the individual who sent the email and I'll get more information. And soon as I have that, we'll have it back in front of you. So. Another bit of good news. I'm reading this here. Our county appraiser every year basically gets, I mean, his appraisals get evaluated by the state. And he has to be determined to be in substantial compliance. And to do that, you have to get a minimum of seventy-five points. And I don't know what these points entail, but Phil was determined to be in substantial compliance and I think by a significant margin. I mean, I think he crushed it. I think if you look at Philip's compliance rate, I mean, I believe he's in like the ninety-ninth percentile. So certainly, and again, having been through the budget process for the first time, you kind of come to understand the cog in the engine that Phil is. And it's very valuable to have a good, accurate appraiser. And so I thought the board should know that that he's done very well there. And then finally, while I've still got Alan here and he's, we're welcome to come up. If you'll recall, we did a disaster declaration after all of these recent storms, per correspondence that I've received from Alan. It does not look like we're going to be able to qualify for assistance. If you want more details, certainly he's the man to ask, which that's unfortunate. But apparently, certain criteria have to be met and they weren't met in this instance. And-
Have we ever gotten paid for the last one that we did qualify for?
Well, that was twenty fifteen, right, Jim?
Yeah.
We're still waiting on some funds to come in. I can tell you, the reason we didn't qualify, we didn't meet the state level, which was four point three million. The storm that really hit us hard up in the north and northeast corner of the county only affected two other counties. So we didn't qualify as a state to go on up. I was also at a meeting last week, and you're going to see more of these declarations. That's just one of the things that FEMA is requesting. Even if we don't need assistance for the response phase, for the recovery phase, if we, if it looks like we've got substantial damage, then we'll do a declaration because FEMA is going to want to see those sooner than what we've been doing them on, especially when it just affects the infrastructure, the roads and the bridges for us.
All right. Anything else, Derek?
That is all I have today.
Sheriff, would you?
Commissioners, it's been a busy month. We've made it through the Cowboy Days weekend and the Power of the Past weekend, and then the River Run. This weekend is Wellsville Days, and we also assist with that. So this is a pretty busy time of year for us, kind of like the fair time of year is as well. And we also have all the homecomings. As you guys approved the one for Ottawa High School. We have, Central Heights has their parade and rally tonight, and we'll be participating in part of that. Last week, there was some flooding at the jail in Miami County, and they had to close down. And our count was low enough, we were able to house some of their inmates. And then later in the week, our count was so high that we have had to farm out, not for any reason other than our count just got high. We were over eighty inmates. So we have a total of eleven farmed out. Nine of those were farmed out because of count. Two of those were farmed out because of other reasons that we needed to have them separate from other inmates. So we have a couple that are farmed out for that. Those are things that we're going to, we are probably always going to run into special circumstances like that, the inmate count part. It's just kind of a hit and miss thing. But so that, you know, we do have eleven farmed out right now. And hopefully, we'll bring those nine back here before, before too long our count got, is back down into the sixties now. So.
Were we able to turn around and swap favors with Miami County?
Yes. That's what we're, well, no, ours could not go to Miami, Miami County. They did not have room. No one close to us had room.
Where are they at?
They are in Cherokee County. It's about a two-hour drive in the-
Where's Cherokee County's jail?
It's down southeast, down-
I know where Cherokee County, but what town would that be? That Cherryvale or is it, as we go? Maybe it's at-
I don't, I don't remember what-
Leon says Columbus.
Columbus. Leon's telling me Columbus.
But it's a waste. So anyway, that's where we, where we stand on that. Just want to give you guys an update.
Nick, did you have anything else to add? All right. Alan, anything else? Larry, anything? Come on down if you would.
You know that we've been advertising for positions on the planning commission? To date, we have only received one applicant. We have three positions that were open, so we're still searching. And we've published this notice several times in the paper. And frankly, we haven't had much success, but I would appreciate any efforts that you could make towards helping us get some more candidates for the vacancies that we have on the planning commission.
In the past, that's really the only thing that's worked is going out and asking people in the community if they'd like to do it and explaining to them what it entails, as I understand, right? So.
We have a vacancy on the board. It's only appeals has been vacant for three years and haven't been able to receive anyone that would be willing to serve on that board.
We're getting close to not having a quorum on the planning commission. So.
Right.
Dee made me a sheet, and I think maybe if we could print them off and put them in all the commissioners' boxes, just kind of a one-page summary of what the planning commission does, generally what the time commitment is, things like that. And I think those are good for if any of us were to, you know, go ask somebody to consider being on that board, something that we can, you know, hand or recite to them. So.
Right. We can do that.
Ask her to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Well, as was mentioned earlier, chip seal's over. You will furnish a copy of the two thousand seventeen bridge inspection report. And that's majority of what's been happening. And that's a majority of what's been happening.
Nothing? All right, just commissioners' comments and board reports?
I don't have too much. I was attended Richmond's city council meeting and it was actually on the 12th. They had, it was a long, very long meeting, but they're, no longer have their city clerk, so they're trying to work through that with some part-time help to try to keep them going with their water bills and so forth. And they spent most of the meeting talking what they're, what they're expecting and what the, the people that's helping them out are doing. Very crowded, they had an issue, sheriff department probably knows what someone's pit bull supposedly killed someone else's dog, so there was parties from both sides there and, and they end up finally referring that to their city judge to, to figure out what they're going to do about that. And that's about the extent of what I've been to.
Two weeks ago today in the afternoon, I met at Wellsville with Midge and some other people on their sidewalk program to help create walking trails and bike trails that will connect within the county and join those others and looking at coming up with a grant. Last Wednesday, one with most of you attended the Chambers Legislative Breakfast. Then went to the Wellsville City Council meeting last Wednesday night. They did talk about the radios, sidewalks. They, they did some discussion on a policy relating to their police officers taking home their vehicles. You know, we've had a little bit of that discussion ourselves and discussed, they're looking to come up with a exact policy on how they're going to cover that. Also, their sheriff reported on their defibrillators being available in all their police cars and some of that information on their police cars. And then last Monday night, Roy and I both went to the Farm, Farm Bureau's legislative tour and found that very interesting too. And Karen Tyson spoke to some of the things, particularly had to do with the Tyson Food Project up at Tongi or that area and some of those other things, as well as the legislature. So, that was an interesting meeting as well.
All right. The 11th of September, I attended the Chamber Board meeting. They talked about still needing to find somebody to take the office space upstairs to try to help ease some of that budget. Some people that have left, some members that have left, shortstop changing ownership, of course, lost the Papa John's pizza. They also talked about they're going to pull back their social media account and they're going to do that back in-house now, just try to pull back on the budget a little bit. And, and then there was a report from the OCPI about the funding update and how that's going. And that's all about trying to build this project at First and Walnut, which kind of would be a pavilion space that could be used maybe, maybe all year, maybe not all year and what benefits it would bring, maybe bathrooms outside, passway to Main Street, Farmer's Market maybe there, the ability to have maybe concerts there or something along those lines. And then also about the, at the same time that, an update on the rush to trails that's coming through Franklin County in the upcoming weeks and how important that is. And Ottawa is a registration point for that, so that's going to happen on the 6th, I believe it is.
7th, October, Saturday?
Yeah, so, that's it.
Roy?
Yeah, like Randall said, went to the exit issues, met the Lieutenant Governor, who's Governor as soon as Brownback gets confirmed and, and he's one of the many governor, governor candidates. I think there's 10 or, 10 or 11 running for governor, so he's going to be one of them. Then like Randall said, we went to the Farm Bureau Legislative, have a tour out at Bowman's Meat Processing Plant, which is a former Stinson's plant out south of town. They do a real good job of what they're doing there and it's been pretty popular. And then we went down to the Branding Iron. The Rocker family runs the Branding Iron and we had dinner there, so it was a very good tour and, and like Randall said, heard, heard from Karen Tyson. And the Farm Credit sponsored the meal and heard from Farm Credit for sponsoring the meal. I'll be doing the, ECAN has a retreat this Saturday out at OU and I'll be going to the retreat for the board. And that's about it.
Derek and I went to the FCDC full board meeting yesterday. And the centerpiece of that meeting was definitely the new workforce development plan. And I guess I won't steal their thunder, I think they intend on pretty much unveiling that publicly at the annual banquet coming up here, but I think as we're saying it, you know, big problems like workforce development are difficult to, I guess, put together an actionable plan. It's easy to point out what the problems are and especially when they're generational and long-term, but I think everyone will be pleasantly welcome, they'll pleasantly welcome the, the plan and some of the really truly actionable items are put together to have a good outcome on, on workforce development, so. It'll also be a good value-added thing for the FCDC membership, so. That'd really be a, be a positive thing for the organization there, so. If that's it, I get the feeling Derek has something else he might want to say.
Well, I, I appreciate that. There is an active shooter training tomorrow that is being put on by our sheriff's department, our ambulance department. I think city fire's involved. I think it's something they've been kind of training for, for about a month now. It's at American Eagle and it starts at 8 o'clock. To the extent you can, maybe stop by and, and, and see what they're doing out there. So, I think it's, especially in this day and age, it's a great training to have, so.
Also tomorrow's Day on the Job and there'll be, be several county employees out at the city shops building out on Beet Street right next to the law center, so that will be out there in the morning from roughly 8 to about 11:30. So, if anyone, anyone wants to stop by out there and greet the kids and they'll be talking about different jobs in our community and opportunities that they would have here after, after graduation and after college and just try to get those kids back in our community.
All right. That's it, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Repose for adjourned.